Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order. We respectfully acknowledge that the County of Halliburton is located on Treaty 20 Michisogig territory and in the traditional territory of the Michisogig and Chipewa nations collectively known as the Williams Treaty's first nations. We acknowledge a shared presence of indigenous nations throughout the area and recognize its original inhabitants as stewards of its lands and waters since time immemorial. Is there any disclosure pecuniary interest today? Deputy Mayor Daye.
Thank you. Yes, I have a conflict of interest on item 4A1, which is the municipal accommodation tax report, as I own a tourist accommodation in the county.
Thank you. Could I have a mover and a second or two adopt the agenda as presented? Councillors Ferry and Shell.
That the October 9th, 2024, Halliburton County Council Agenda be approved.
All in favor? Let's carry it. So first up is a presentation by Biennial Bridge Inspections and Harold Claywick. Excuse me, Harold. I can't. I'm not sure I'm getting your name correct. So over to you is Harold here.
Good morning.
Good morning, Council. Pleased to make this presentation. Unfortunately, there's some technical difficulties at my end, and there's some background noise from office renovations beside my office. But with all of that, can you understand me? Am I clear?
Yeah, we can hear you well now.
Excellent.
Work our way through it.
I will be happy to take you through the presentation. I understand the presentation will be shown to you on a screen that I can see.
Yeah, it's up now.
Okay, excellent. So Keystone Bridge Management has been looking after the biennial bridge inspections of large culverts and bridges in Halliburton County since 2020. And so this is our third assessment of your structures. And this report to Council is to give you an overview of the, of our findings. Next slide, please. So we inspected 41 structures, 17 of which were bridges and 24 were culverts that were greater than three meters in span. The value of the assets inspected is $121 million. And we identified that there's approximately $8 million in capital needs between now and 2025, or between now and 2030. We're recommending three culverts be replaced and the three bridges receive a comprehensive rehabilitation. What I will be showing is that our recent investment over the past four years by Halliburton has significantly improved the depreciated value of your structure inventory. In fact, it has, the appreciated value has improved by about seven and a half percent. And so the, the investment by, by Halliburton in the structure inventory is yielding significant benefits. Next slide, please. This slide shows the, the age distribution of the, of your structures. And what you can see is that the structures are reasonably well distributed in age between new, effectively brand-new, to just over 110 years old. In fact, your oldest structure is 117, and that would be the structure in Dorset. There is a little bit of a area that stands out, and that is structures between 40 and 60 years old. There are 16 structures in that age range. And so they are going to show up as requiring significant needs in the not-too-distant future. Next slide, please. This slide shows the distribution of size of the structures. And what it's showing is that about 28 structures are under 200 square meters deck area. And the largest structure is just over 600 square meters in, in plan area or deck area. And in overall, they range from about 29 square meters, which would be a culvert, to 651 square meters, which is the Headlake Bridge. It's a reasonably even distribution, and this is pretty typical of most rural municipalities, what I'm showing here. Next slide, please. So when you look at the age or deck area weighted distribution of, of the bridges, we find a couple of interesting statistics. So about 62% of the surface area of all of your structures is greater than 50 years old. More ideally, the split should be 50/50 between older and younger than 50 years. And the other thing that, that shows up here is that about 11% of the deck area has been renewed in the past 20 years. Ideally, that number should be more like 20%. So 1% per year is the ideal. And you've achieved 11%, so it's, it's, it's not unreasonable, but there is room for improvement. Next slide, please. So just to reiterate, about 11% of the inventory has been renewed in the past 20 years. The ideal renewal rate should be 1% per year. The long-term outlook is you're going to have increasing capital expenditures. And with significant investment in preservation capital, it may be possible to hold off on some of the replacements by extending the life of the, of the existing inventory. Next slide, please. Now, this is the capital forecast, blue being bridges, red being culverts. Next year, we're recommending the comprehensive rehabilitation of the Potash Lake Bridge. That's estimated to be about 1.6 million. In 2026, both the Dorset and West Guilford bridges are recommended for a comprehensive rehabilitation. In 2027, the two culverts on County Road 9 are recommended for replacement. 2028, the timber culvert on County Road 503 is, is recommended for replacement. Those are the, the major capital projects that are on the short-term horizon. Next slide, please. This shows the, the capital expenditures over time. And what we have is we have what's sometimes referred to as a mud wave of immediate needs. And after that mud wave is looked after, there's a declining requirement for capital. But that's a little bit deceptive, and we'll, we'll come to that later. But certainly in terms of the immediate needs, there is about $8 million in, in immediate needs between now and, between 2025 and 2030. Next slide, please. We provide a report that shows the estimated remaining service life for your structures and the replacement cost. And this just shows the, the bottom of the list, the, the structures that have the least remaining service life. So at the bottom are the two culverts on County Road 9 that we're forecasting have about three years of remaining service life and should be replaced in 2027. Similarly, the box culvert on 503, we're estimating that it has a service life of about nine years, but we're recommending it be replaced by 2029. And the King's Coat Culvert on Elephant Lake Road, again, it has about 11 years of remaining service life, and ideally, it should be replaced by around 2030. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the forecast replacement cost by decade. So for example, in the next 10 years, there's about $6 million in replacement cost needs. In the following 10 to 20 years, there's about $14 million in replacement cost needs. And then as time progresses, the requirement to replace structures and the associated cost increases dramatically up until about 40 to 50 years hence. We're in the decade from 40 to 50 years hence, we're forecasting about a $31 million need for structure replacement. And this is why it's really important to invest in the structures now before these very significant needs catch up with us and overwhelms the budget of Halliburton County. And, and so effective management now to extend the life of these structures will pay dividends and will help reduce the, the burden that's a forecast 40 to 50 years hence, for example. Next slide, please. This slide shows the depreciated value of the structure inventory with and without capital expenditures. And it's, it's hard to, it's not that dramatic here. But the, there are four different depreciation scenarios shown from the most favorable light to the least favorable light. In the most favorable situation, the Halliburton structures are presently depreciated to about 44% of their original value or their new value. If we're more pessimistic, we could say that they're depreciated about 31%. And if we look at the rate graph, it shows the forecast depreciation if we invest capital, the recommended capital into the inventory. And what we're saying is that if the, that $8 million that's recommended to be spent is spent in the next eight years, then in about 10 years' time, the value of the inventory, the depreciated value, will improve by about 4%. And to put it into, into more understandable terms, a $100,000 a year, per year investment will, will increase or improve the, the depreciated value of the bridges by 1%. Next slide, please. This slide shows four different investment, well, five different investment scenarios. The, the red line is the zero investment, so if you do nothing with the structure inventory, the average depreciation is expected to decline from about 38% to about 17% over 20 years. And so the value of the inventory, the depreciated value of the inventory will, as expected, just decline. The level of investment, one level is the recommended capital, which is just $8 million over the next seven or eight years. And that will produce a marginal improvement, but it does not keep up with, with depreciation. And so it, it kind of shows a line parallel to the red line. And, and that, yes, it will boost the depreciated level of the inventory slightly, but, but not significantly. What, what does show is that the, the fourth investment scenario, which is 1 and 1/2% of the replacement value or a $1.4 million annual expenditure, if that's continued over the next 20 years, that will bring, raise the present depreciated level of the inventory. It's forecast to improve it to about 47% of, of the depreciated, 47% of the retained value of the inventory, I'm sorry. And the, the, the horizontal blue line, that's sort of a target. And ideally, the inventory should be maintained close to that target level of about 50% overall depreciation. And, and again, to get there, we need to spend about $1.4 million per year. And where are we now? Right now, the value of the inventory is about 37, 38% of the new value. That's not a bad spot to be in. It's very, very similar to most other rural municipalities. But again, with a well-distributed structure inventory like you have, it would be more ideal to, to raise that up to closer to the 50% target. And the only way to get there is to have careful and continual spending. So your good strategic expenditures of averaging about $1.4 million per year will get you there. Next slide, please. So we're looking at the bridges before. Now we're looking at the culverts. So the culverts are in very good condition. When you look at this graph, presently, their retained value is about 49% of, of new. And they're forecast to decline to about 19, 20% of the retained value over the next 20 years if there's no investment. And, and so there has been some significant replacement and, and rehabilitation investment in the culverts that has resulted in this very favorable position for the culvert inventory. But again, continued expenditures are required to maintain the culverts at a healthy level of depreciation. Next slide, please. Very similar to the bridges, this is five different investment scenarios. The red line being no investment. And without investment in the culvert inventory, they are expected to decline to about 20% retained value in 20 years. And the present recommended investment following the capital program will raise the value of the culverts to about 53% retained value after about five years. And then they'll, it'll decline to about 33% in 20 years. The more, the more favorable investment scenario is of the order of about 1 to 1 and 1/2% of replacement value. The recommended, or the target expenditure level for culverts should be of the order of $300,000 to $400,000 a year. And that will help maintain the culverts close to that ideal of about 50% retained value. Next slide, please. So this, this slide is some, it's a good news slide. This shows where the Halliburton inventory stood in 2020, 2022, and this past year. And the leftmost column shows that the loss in value due to damage and defects was, stood at about 13 and 1/2%. So 13 and 1/2% of the, of the loss in value of the inventory was due to deterioration. And that has improved to 11.9% in our last inspection cycle that just took place this past year. The retained value of the inventory, if we assume parabolic depreciation, has improved from 33.9% in 2020 to 41% in the present. And again, this is all due to recent investment. If we assume straight-line depreciation, the value of, the appreciated value of the inventory has improved from 23.3% to 31.1%. If we average, we're looking at about a 7 and 1/2% improvement from 2020 to 2024. The, the appreciated value of the inventory has improved $7 million in, in the last four years. And that is very reflective of the actual capital expenditures spent on the inventory in the, in, in the past four years. So, so investment does provide benefits, and that's what I'm trying to show here. Next slide, please. The Goodham Bridge was rehabilitated last year. And so just showing a few contrasting pictures of the railings and curbs from before rehabilitation to after rehabilitation, and also a bearing that was replaced. And the, the difference is, of course, quite dramatic. And I'm sure Council has had the opportunity to drive across these bridges and see for themselves the improvement. Next slide, please. This culvert is on the capital program. And this is a little nod to the impacts of our changing climate. And this culvert was given a rehabilitation treatment a few years ago. But some very, very severe storms in early 2024 has undercut the, the shock re- repairs. And we're recommending additional expenditures on this culvert to secure it from the walls coming in due to undercutting of the, of the, the foundations. And so, so again, like this is, this is one example of where money needs to be spent. Next slide, please. These are the two culverts on County Road 9. And the top-left image, you can see, hopefully you can see that the culvert, which, the steel would have a thickness of about two or three millimeters, is completely eaten away by the, mostly the corrosive water in the stream. And so the corrosion eats away at the galvanizing, which is a protection for the culvert. And once the galvanizing is lost due to this acidity in the water, then actually bacteria in the water take over, and they start eating away and corroding the, the steel to the point that it perforates. And when the perforation is close to the midline of the culvert, that makes it particularly vulnerable to a very dramatic failure mode. And so, so these culverts, because of the, the standing high water and the general condition, are, are vulnerable to a somewhat sudden collapse that, that nobody wants to have happen to them. And, and so strongly recommended that these culverts be replaced in the next few years. Next slide, please. The Bridge Condition Index is something that is mandated and certainly something of, of interest to all municipalities in Ontario that have structures. It, in my opinion, it is not the best measure of the condition of your bridges, but it is a common measure that is widely understood. So despite its deficiencies, it, it, it still persists as, as a measure. And the, the present Bridge Condition Index is, is such that 68.3% of the structures, or 28 of them, have a range between 70 and 100, which is a favorable position to be in. 11 of the structures have a BCI, or Bridge Condition Index, between 60 and 70. And one structure has a Bridge Condition Index of less than 50, or sorry, between 60 and 50. And, and one has a, a condition index below 50. So there are certainly 13 structures that have an undesirable Bridge Condition Index. And most of them should be rehabilitated or replaced in the next 10 years or thereabouts. The ideal, from the MTO perspective, is that 80% of the structures have a Bridge Condition Index greater than 70. You have 68%, so you're about 12% behind, but it's not a bad spot to be in. And it's, it's actually very, very similar to most other rural municipalities that I deal with in the, in Ontario. Next slide, please. So this is a sort of a wrap-up slide. The, it compares the bridges and culverts. So your bridges are valued at about $94 million of inventory. Your culverts are about $30 million in inventory. The bridges are depreciating at a rate of 1% per year. The culverts are depreciating at a rate of 1.5% per year. If you transform that into dollars, the bridges are depreciating at a rate of about $1 million a year. And the culverts are depreciating at a rate of about $400,000 a year. In total, the loss in value to your inventory is about $1.3 million per year. The recommended capital to improve the asset value for bridges were recommending about $1.4 million per year over the next 20 years. So that's a desirable average over the next 20 years. For culverts, we're recommending about $420,000 per year over the next 20 years. And in total, about $1.8 million per year for the next 20 years is a healthy and respectable level of investment that will improve the retained value of the structure slightly and bring it up to a more desirable 50% retained value. That's a hefty price tag. So the good news is that the immediate needs are substantially less than that. We're recommending over the next six years, an expenditure of $663,000 per year for the bridges and $657,000 per, or $657,000 per year for the culverts. So about $1.3 million per year for the next six years is our recommendation based on the inspections completed in 2024. And I believe that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Harold. You've painted a very clear and, in my mind, somewhat daunting picture for us. I, before I go to questions, I would just ask Sil if you have anything that you'd like to add.
Just that, I'd just like to add that, as Harold stated before, the last four years or so, the county did invest quite a bit of, of money into their structures. And as you can see through the presentation, if we continue that investment, that will keep our, our structures in good health moving forward.
So I would look to Council for questions or comments. Councillor Daye.
Thanks very much for the presentation. As you noted, the bridge in Dorset is very old, and it is hard to overestimate the heritage value of the bridge for the population of Dorset. It's iconic. And I wonder if you could say, just off the top of your head, the degree to which what you believe is required for that bridge would affect the heritage elements of that bridge?
Thank you for the question, I, councillor. I, I am very familiar with the Dorset Bridge, and it is a lovely bridge. And I do appreciate that it is iconic to the community and especially the, well, the boating community and the whole community. The bridge is old and tired. It is load-posted. And, and that's the responsible thing to do. What the challenge is with a bridge such as that is it's very, very difficult to inspect properly or meaningfully. There are a lot of, there's, there's significant corrosion. Much of the corrosion is visible. It's the corrosion that is not visible that is the most concerning and could catch the, the municipalities. There are two municipalities that own the bridge, I understand. So between Muskoka and Halliburton, it's shared. The, there's a significant, sorry, there's a significant risk when you continue to keep a structure such as that in service. when you continue to keep a structure such as that in service. And so to help overcome the risk, what's required is more intense, more regular and more thorough inspection. The level of inspection that we provided was reasonably generous, but only based on standing on the ground and clambering over the bridge and looking over the edges. And so we rely on experience, we rely on what we can see, and then we have to speculate what we can't see. The ideally, a structure such as that should, if it has a lot of heritage value, it almost needs to be, particularly the, the bottom cord members, which is the, the structural steel at the road level that has the most corrosion. It should almost be removed piece by piece and replaced piece by piece as required so that you know what you have and you have, you have, you have, you know, a full understanding of, of, of the actual condition of the bridge. Right now, there's only an incomplete understanding of how good or bad the bridge is. The, the concrete deck on this bridge, it has a lot of wear from stonobill traffic, no doubt, and, and just general traffic. It is a relatively thin lightweight structure. The duck is delaminated, which means that it's separating between the level of reinforcing. When you tap it with a hammer, it sounds hollow. The deck is at risk of potentially having a local failure. It's not something that's dangerous to the public, but it would result in a closure of the bridge until it can be fixed. And, and so I would forecast that if nothing is done to the deck, that there's a high probability in the next ten years that the, the deck could have a local failure that would result in a temporary closure until it can be fixed. And so, so definitely the, the deck needs restoration work. And, and again, it's the risk associated with that keeping a bridge that is over a hundred years old, that's been subjected to corrosion from the icing salts. And, and again, it's never been taken apart to, you know, to give it a thorough, thorough, thorough inspection. It has been rehabilitated. The rehabilitation was reasonably well done. But the rehabilitation was not perfect, in my view. It, it did leave some issues that, that still stand today and that, that should be addressed in a, in a, in a further rehabilitation. A bridge like this can be maintained, it can, it can be restored to, it's, it's, it's you know, restored to a good serviceable condition and retain its heritage value. It's often expensive, often more expensive than, than a replacement. Even if it is restored to, to a dependable version of itself, it would still require load posting, which I don't understand is a big, which I understand is not a big hardship. But, but yes, it can be, it can be repaired. It, it, at, at some expense. And to do nothing or just to try to coax it along every year, the risk of being surprised increases. And so at some point, a decision has to be made to, you know, use the term like bite the bullet, something needs to be done. And I would suggest that if the local municipalities, the, you know, the local community wants to preserve and maintain the heritage value, then it does need to commit to a potential partial dismantling of the bridge, a partial member replacement of critical members such as the, the bottom cords and perhaps some of the stringers. And certainly, the, the deck needs to be replaced. The deck could be replaced with a lighter timber deck, for example. But a timber deck would require periodic replacement about every twenty years or so. The timber deck would require a replacement. It's, 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 it's expensive keeping a bridge like this, but it can be done. And my responsibility is just to highlight the fact that a bridge such as this should be of concern. And, and it, it does require significant capital to maintain in its present condition, or well, not in its present condition, to maintain it in a, in a sound, serviceable condition and, and, and and maintaining it in a known condition. Right now, it's in a somewhat unknown condition, and that's the concern.
Thank you so much for that detailed response. I think on behalf of the township of Algonquin Highlands, I would like to request of our council to think very seriously about what we might do in order to preserve that heritage. It really is that iconic. So with your, with your, your patience, if we could put those additional steps into understanding all of our options when it comes to that particular bridge, that would be just wonderful. Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Counselor Carter?
So I understand the financials. But, you know, when I think of bridges and culverts, I think of them as, you know, not falling down or, you know, that they are serviceable and they, they are working. So I'm not, I'm assuming that, you know, your retained value is some sort of a proxy for the condition of the, of the structures. I know you don't, you said you don't like this BCI, you know. So tell me, what, what is the condition of the structures? I mean, what is the measure? What is something? Because, you know, I, I find the, the, the financial side of it to be, you know, a bit removed from, you know, the function.
Okay, thank you for that question, Counselor. What, what the challenge is, from my perspective, and, and part of my job is to inform the decision makers where the needs are and where's the most effective place to invest in, in the structural inventory to maintain it at a sound and, and, and serviceable condition. The, the structures that in terms of the condition of the structures, we, the individual reports are, are your best source to get a better understanding of the condition of each structure. There are photographs, there's a documented, documentation on each of the components of the structure such as the deck, the abutments, the, the inside of a culvert, for example. And so, so the individual inspection reports speak more meaningfully to the actual condition of each structure. The capital needs that we provide, they point the decision makers to where the immediate needs are, where the immediate concerns are, where the strongest argument for investment exists. Then on the financial side, council needs to be equipped to defend public expenditure on their various assets, their, their, their road surfaces, their safety appliances, their, their buildings, their water and sewer, et cetera. And I can only speak to the, the structures, so the bridges and large culverts, that's my expertise. And it is my, I consider it my duty as part of the work that I do and, and the, the part of the value added I do from, from doing these bridge and large culvert inspections is to give a meaningful indication to the decision makers of the value of their inventory and the rate of depreciation so that they have some tools by which to come up with a meaningful, long-term investment plan and defensible investment plan for their inventory. And this is something that Keystone Bridge Management does in a manner that no other consultant in Ontario repeats, like we take great pride in, in the service that we provide and when we speak to the depreciated level of the inventory. And nobody else does it the way we do. We have a very unique approach. And we're very proud of it, and, and that's why we've been retained by historically for a long, long time by many of our clients.
Counselor Carter?
So again, on the depreciation, so, you know, I mean, there's some Roman aqueducts that are still standing that are probably depreciated down to zero, but still have value. So I, you know, I, I guess I'm, I'm trying to understand this, I mean, you know, depreciation from a financial perspective, as you call it, parabolic or straight line usually, you know, occurs on the books whether or not the bridge is still standing. So when you talk, you know, please try to explain to me a little bit. And I know we don't have all day here, but you know, what you mean by depreciation and, and because you turn it all back into dollars and I, and that's where I'm, the gap is in my understanding.
Okay. Unfortunately, most of the structures in Ontario were not built to the same standards as the Roman infrastructure. I've seen the Roman infrastructure with my own eyes. And it's really, really incredible and, and a testament to building without reinforcing steel in, 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 in your structures. In any case, I'll take an example of, of culverts. There are two types of culverts primarily, corrugated steel culverts and concrete culverts. Corrugated steel culverts, in the best of circumstances, will last about fifty years. In the worst of circumstances, will last about thirty years. Typically, a culvert installation it will last about thirty five to forty years. And absolutely, it would be imprudent to maintain it in service after that length of time. And so that culvert, it, it depreciates from new value to zero value in the order of thirty to forty years. And, and that, that is just a hard fact. There's no culvert material that comes close to the longevity of some of the Roman infrastructure. Bridges typically, so for example, the, the lovely green trust bridge is at the Armstrong Bridge. Can't think of it just now. It's, it's lasted for about a hundred years. And after about a hundred years, the reliability of the structure is, is not assured. Because you cannot see everything that you need to see to, to assure the reliability of the structure. And, and so it's not unreasonable to think of a, a structure having very, very little value after a hundred years. And in fact, the, the
If you could turn your phone off, please.
Back to its value, you'd have to spend at least at, at, at least, at least the value of the structure to bring it back. So does that, does that help at all?
A little, but obviously, I, I, I need a some remedial work in my engineering and accounting skills.
If, if I might, Counselor, to add a little bit to how we operate with respect to. So the depreciated value helps us plan out long-term financial costs as the replacement of, of, of the asset itself. What we use, we use that value, but we also use the asset management plan on the physical status structure. So as we were going through and identifying how much money we need to put aside, and we can, and we talk about that through the, the budget process, it also allows us, it allows us to plan out and assess, we're assessing the physical value, to your point, the physical value of the bridge at the time or the structure at the time. And then Sil and his team start planning out when we have to do remedial work or complete replacement and things of that nature. And when we jump back on the financial side, as we've identified to council, we've been currently right now, we, we've dedicated one percent of the tax levy or two hundred and two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year going in to build that, that, that financial chest up to address those costs going forward. So we're looking at timing out the replacement or remediation level plus the investment or the savings of money, if you will, to, to line up with when those, the thing comes due. So that's how we look at it, using the important information that's been provided us today in, 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 in addition to our asset management plan and our financial management. Does that help any?
It, I mean, it does a little, but you know, the and, and it's really important that, you know, somebody is looking at the, each of these individual reports. Because, you know, you may, we may build the, the bridge that's supposed to last us for fifty or sixty years. And after ten years, because of, you know, because of weather, because of environment, because of the way it was built, it's not, it's not, you know, it's deteriorating at a faster rate or something like that. So, you know, the, the financial value of it and the, the practical value of it may be way off. And so I'm just, I'm just trying to, like, looking at the overall financials and the retained value and so on. You know, it's not doing a lot for me. I want to know how much work we're going to have to invest in it.
It, so just, I didn't jump in and then turn it to Mr. Crichay. To your point, so that's what, it's, so it's not just one point in time, there's multiple things we look at with respect to it's their asset management side of it. So our asset management plan is almost done, so there will be coming forward. Yeah, so that's one of the principal tools we use. It puts out on a chronological basis or a, a time basis on the value of the, sort of the state of the asset as well as the value of the asset. And allows us to plan and ahead of time go in and do a, a, the actual physical inspection or look at an asset and say, okay, it's planned to be fixed at this date and time. Based on our assessment, we can either, either have to move it up or push it forward, right? Or sorry, or push it out. And then, then we apply the, the monies we've collected as to now where's the best way to prioritize putting those capital monies into the asset. So it's, it's a whole stack of, of information we use. And with the new, the new team that Sil has at his disposal, that's being done on an ongoing basis or will be going on an ongoing basis. And part of the program going forward is to have those type of status reports to council as part of our quarterly reports, where we start forecasting out the accuracy of our capital spending over the next five years, ten years going forward.
Go ahead.
Look, the only reason I'm, you know, bringing this up is that, you know, the numbers we're talking about here, you know, the high and the low end of the investment is a two to three percent, you know, hit on the tax rate. And so, you know, these are important numbers that we have to be considering for, for everybody in the county.
I, I've got to say, I do appreciate the question though, because it does, I mean, to me, I think of in terms of durability, conditions, safety, you know, as opposed to depreciation values, but you know, I think there is a correlate, you can see the correlation between the two. Counselor Rayel?
Yeah, I come from a manufacturing background. This is what I did for a living. And so what I listened to what's being said from when I did, once I bought a piece of equipment, the actual asset value of it became zero. What I was looking more for was two basic issues. One was the functional and productive integrity of the unit. And the second thing is the lifespan. So when you start measuring what you're doing, you start acting, what is the cost? And those costs break down into three different groups, maintenance, retrofit, and replacement. Those are the three aspects of what you're going to be doing. So at some point in time, the maintenance gets to the point where it is so high that a retrofit is required. A retrofit gets so expensive that replacement is required. So at the end of the day, the asset value is merely the replacement cost of that particular unit in that year's dollars. So as it depreciates, an accountant is interested, but an operational person couldn't care less. What they're more interested in is the thing going to fail. And if it's going to fail, is it going to fail at a point in time when it's not going to be of any, it's going to create the greatest amount of damage? And Murphy usually says that's the case. So I, I, I would like to think that when we were spending money, we should be looking at those two things. One, what is the current percentage functionality and productivity of that unit if we spend money on it? So if it's currently sitting at forty percent capacity capability and we spend a hundred thousand dollars on it, and that's going to bring it up to sixty to seventy percent, is that acceptable? Yes or no? It's not, it's not a difficult question, it's an easy one. At some point in time, that maintenance is now going to start accumulating two years, three years, four years down the road, that we can project. So now you end up with a total cost at the end of five years of Y amount of money. Is that more expensive than a retrofit today? Yes or no? And if the answer to that is yes, then we're going to extend our, our functional integrity and our lifespan by a reasonable amount, then we spend the money. If that's not possible, then we start looking at how to replace it. And I think what we're talking about here is how much money do we put into reserve every year to make sure that if in the event that we have to retrofit at a large cost? or we have to replace at a larger cost, that there's some amount of insurance money in our reserves to cover that. And is that what I'm, is that basically what we're talking about here? Because if it is, then, then, then what we're basically saying is we're using asset value as just a way of determining how much money we should be putting into our reserves.
Did you want to comment on that?
Just briefly, and I'll turn over to Syl to respond to. So on the financial side of it, yes, I guess is the, is the, is the short answer to it. However, it's a little broader than that in the sense that as we're looking for, because we have so many assets we're looking at, we're looking at, we're not looking at one fixed asset, we have so many of them. It's then we go to the next step and we use the asset management plan. And as we're, over time, we're doing it on a continual basis. Council did take the progressive stuff last year where we dedicated a one percent increase, one percent draw from the tax base directly for this purpose, which puts us, I think it was a two hundred and forty thousand dollars plus or minus a year. We will be asking, recommending that that one percent become two percent going into twenty twenty-five. That will get us up to the four, almost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to start addressing what we're looking is going to be increased costing going forward. Because that's a low, a soft point in our budget right now is the dedication into these large capital structures, which are our most expensive assets we have to replace. But yes, so it's, it's a combination of the two. It's the fiscal planning, but it's also, to councillor Carter's point, is, yes, the cost is an important factor, but also the integrity of the structure is even more important, is even more essential factor as well. And it's combining the two and working with the documents we have and the good information we've received on this inspection report to allow us to prioritize the spending over multiple assets over time.
Back to you, Syl, I think I missed you earlier.
Oh, thank you. Through you, Warden. So the, the objective of the OSIMs or the bridge biannual inspection is to actually assess what the bridge are and then tie a value to that. And then with our asset management, as Mr. Dyke mentioned before, we relate the two together and that becomes our plan, our five-year, ten-year plan. And then to that, we prioritize what needs to be done. If it's just a small remediation, a major replacement or any in-between. And when we, our asset management, basically, that's the plan that does that. But this report every two years just provides us the information to update the plan and appropriately fund the sorry, appropriately fund the program on an ongoing basis.
Other questions or comments? Councillor Fury?
Well, this is certainly a daunting subject and it's a lot of money, but I understand that we've made some progress the last two years, which is great. I'm going to shed a little bit of humor here. That picture of the guy standing on the culvert on Road Nine, it's not a parachute or life jackets he's got on. Is that you, Phil?
No, actually, I believe that was Harold.
Oh, okay.
Other comments or questions? Well, thank you so much, Harold, for your, for your detailed report. Excuse me, could I have a mover and a seconder to receive the presentation, councillors Carter and Burton?
That the presentation by Harold Clayweight regarding the biennial bridge inspection be received?
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. I would ask members of council if there's anything that they would like pulled from the consent agenda for discussion. There's quite a few items on here and it's, it's a, you know, it is a, a bit of a swing from, you know, what we have normally seen. Councillor Alice? If you, if there is an item on the consent agenda that you have questions about or wish to comment on or would like further information, you ask at this point in time to have it removed from the consent agenda and put on to the remainder of the agenda to be spoken to? Otherwise, it's just accepted as presented. I'm going to recommend that we pull the information technology work plan update for just a little bit better presentation and understanding of that. No, sorry, the Enhanced Digital Security and Trust Act, as well as the Economic Development Work Plan Update, so we can hear a little bit more from Scott on his plans.
I have some information on HKPR as well.
Then we would pull that as well.
So just from a process standpoint, so what happens now, so they'll come, we'll deal with the consent agenda. And the items that are pulled will go to their regular spot in the agenda. They won't be dealt with right away, they'll go where they normally appear in the agenda.
Councillor Fury?
You did pull the IT report, didn't you?
Not the IT report, I did say that to begin with, but what I meant was the
I have a question on the IT.
Okay, we can pull that as well. Councillor Carter?
Yeah, I would like four, five, six, and I guess eight.
Okay. You just have to keep me updated on exactly where.
Yeah, so the new, yeah, so the new motion regarding the consent agenda would now be that items listed on the heading consent agenda for October ninth twenty-four be adopted, save and accept items H, four, five, six, and eight.
Seven as well. Could I have a mover and a seconder then? Councillors Carter and Fury?
That items listed under the heading consent agenda for October ninth be adopted, save and accept items H, four, five, six, seven, and eight.
All in favor? That's carried. Okay, so next our consideration of reports, we don't have anything under the Office of the CAO, Corporate Services, Public Works, Transportation, Facilities Engineering, or Capital Projects. So next up would be Economic Development. And the first report is on the MAT tax. Good morning.
I think it's on, yes. Good morning, members of council, and morning, Danielson. I have before you an information report about public engagement sessions that we conducted for the municipal accommodation tax and the creation of a municipal services corporation. As listed in the report, the information is that we did a number of public engagement meetings over the course of the summer, as well as a public survey. This is all legislated by the province when you're creating a municipal services corporation. There isn't specific requirements on how you do the public engagement, that's left up to the county or the municipalities. So this is what our department decided we thought would be the best way to tackle this. We had really good engagement, in our opinion. We had great results on the survey, nearly eighty responses, and we had a good attendance for the Zoom meetings that we held. Some great feedback, some concerns, questions on how it's all going to roll out, which we tried our best to answer. And now we're taking this information moving forward to present it to the province and to help us create the business case for the creation of the Municipal Services Corporation, which will be brought to you at the October twenty-third council meeting. I'm happy to answer any questions or provide more information about it at this time.
Questions? Well, no questions. Could I then have a mover and a seconder to receive the report? Councillor Shell and Rayel?
That, that Halberton County Council receives staff report, EDT one five twenty-two four municipal accommodation tax public engagement summary. And the summary of public engagement be included in the county submission to the province for the creation of the Municipal Service Corporation.
All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. It was easier than I expected. I think it might be an appropriate time to take a fifteen-minute break. Well, call the meeting back to order then. Uh, next on the agenda is, uh, item under C one, um, the, uh, update, excuse me, to the economic development work plan. Welcome, Mr. Rodeau.
Thank you, Warden, and good morning, members of council. Uh, in front of you today is just our bimonthly economic development, uh, update and an update to our two zero twenty four work plan. Um, just a couple of items I'd like to note, just a plug for our partners, um, that we're working with to, um, organize Ontario Small Business Week taking place from October twenty first to twenty fifth. Um, the programming for the weeks outlined, uh, in the staff report. Um, it culminates with the Chamber Awards and Events Gala on October twenty fifth at the Dicer Legion or Halliburton Legion. Um, so just if you'd like to attend, uh, let us know and we can help you get tickets. Um, also in there, we are looking at, we've made some applications with some of our regional partners in the city of Coortle Lakes and Peterborough County. Um, along with Trent University and Loyalist College on some skills development fund applications. Um, they've seen a lot of success in those programs, so I'm really grateful that some of the work that we've done since I've been here to establish those relationships are now reaching out to us to see if we want to participate in some of those regional programs. Um, which is nice to see. Um, I have noted in there as well, just something that we're really in the early stages on is a volunteer management, um, kind of portal for event organizer, event organizers in local organizations. Um, in a workshop recently with a, a former colleague of mine, um, there's potentially a portal that we can use, um, that we can access. Where organizations would basically be able to go on, um, develop profiles and post volunteer opportunities. Um, members of the public would then subsequently be directed to that kind of one stop shop, so to speak. Uh, and could view volunteer opportunities and we're just kind of hoping to grow and support our, um, volunteer base within Halliburton County, knowing it's such an important part of what we do. Um, and happy to field any questions you might have related to the report.
Um, I was particularly happy to see the work that you're doing on, on, you know, establishing some kind of a, a, a portal or program for volunteer, uh, finding volunteers for different events, but the one question that I did ask Scott and, and he said that it will be included is, is volunteers for municipal committees. I know that Elgunkin Highlands has had some challenges with getting, you know, where everybody's getting older, you know, the older population were the ones that were doing the volunteering and, and we're just having some challenges so that, that that portal would include opportunities for, for committee, uh, memberships within the municipalities. Other questions or comments? Counselor Fury.
God, I see you've highlighted some businesses there that are unique to our area and, and encourage people to review that. Uh, I perceive that that could be, uh, that's out there in the world. It's, it's a form of advertising for those folks. As I see it, and if I were in that business and had been for twenty years and somebody came in here and here and started that business two years ago and they get, get this advertising. I don't know if there's another way to do it. I know what you're trying to do, but I don't know whether we could kind of loot, loot them or something like they're not, there's maybe three or four in most of those categories. I, I just think it could be a little bit unfair.
Uh, yeah, three, Warden. Um, so that was, uh, an investment attraction campaign we developed through, um, a red grant we received through the, the province. Um, and, and just a bit of background on that, um, you know, we don't have the budget to kind of do kind of direct to consumer, you know, investment attraction marketing. Um, you know, we're, you know, when you're trying to compete with the city of Toronto or some of the, the bigger centers in the GTA. So I've always been a big proponent of just highlighting the businesses that are here and have been committed to the community. Uh, what we tried to do is basically break the economy down by sector and then look at businesses within that sector, um, and then also try to break it across the county. Um, so I think we landed on about twenty, so there's more to come. Um, I've already had businesses reach out to us, um, over the spring and the summer saying they'd like to be involved. So it is something that I've built into our budget and our work plan next year that we'll look at trying to do. Um, obviously probably with, without the provincial funding, we probably have to, to do it on a smaller scale. We'll try to do five or six. Um, and to be a little bit probably more an open transparent, we, we might do an open call through just the Chamber of Commerce, um, that anyone wants to participate. Um, I just have to work with our staff kind of internally to, to break down how we would then go about selecting businesses. It, it is, um, a piece that they can use for advertising. I know some, um, of the people that we've worked with have actually kind of thought about even using the, the footage that we've created. Um, in, I think, kind of like local markets in Peterborough and things like that, but I duly noted, and it's something that, you know, we identified that probably we're, we're going to have a, you know, some people, you know, want to participate that maybe we couldn't include, and we'll just have to build that in moving forward.
Uh, Counselor Carter, then Counselor Rayal.
Um, so on your, uh, Small Business Week, um, maybe, I mean, the, I think the twenty third and twenty fifth are pretty self-explanatory, but you're, the twenty first, this kickoff, um, meeting. Just explain a little bit of what that is and what you hope to achieve.
Um, so that's, that's kind of a, I would say, a, a team effort, but in conversations last year, um, it wasn't again, it was the first year that we did it. Um, and other centers, what you'll see is a, you know, a chamber of commerce will host like a business after hours and it's, it's kind of a form of a networking event. And, and then that business where it's hosted can kind of highlight what they're doing. Um, so this year, last year was an idea we came up with a little bit later in the game and we, we kind of did it, I think it was at Bosch Kong and it wasn't that well attended. Really all it is, is it's a form of a business after hours and just trying to promote it and get, you know, local business owners into the room and kind of networking with each other and introducing people. Um, it's more of a social, it's, and then it's a way for all the members to plug the other events that they have going on that week. Um, in conversations with Amanda at the Chamber, it's something that I think we would like to work with them on and, you know, even doing that on a bimonthly basis. Um, you know, particularly over the, the winter and into the spring. Again, it's a great form of networking, you know, introducing local business owners to each other. Um, and then it gives us an opportunity at the counter, county and the, and both the chamber to kind of develop those connections and relationships. Um, so that people feel comfortable reaching out to us if, if they're looking for support or they're dealing with an issue that, you know, they'd like our input on.
Counselor Rayal?
Just, just a thought, Scott. In, in the way that we're trying to promote, uh, our businesses across the county. Uh, would, would it be possible to put together some kind of a, uh, of a template, uh, which would, uh, could be coming to each of the would wanting to be involved, whereby they would be able to insert victorials, to insert whatever it is that they want to be done with very little, if any, editing coming from that. And then it would be in a format that would enable us to be able to reproduce it or insert it into any kind of a, of an idea without incurring a tremendous amount of costs. Um, I, I don't know if it already exists and I retract my question, but if not, is it something that we could do or think about doing?
Um, yeah, absolutely. We can, you know, again, reach out to local businesses and if, if they have content. Um, what we do now is, you know, if they have content that we're, you know, they're looking to promote, we're happy to support that, support that through the, the channels we have. Um, as long as we're kind of adhering to the municipal act that, that hangs out there and we're not kind of, um, doing any bonusing, but, um, yeah, as we grow that, it's again, as, as my view is, it's easier to retain a customer than it is to attract a new one. Um, so again, it's about supporting the businesses that are here first and foremost. Um, and making sure that they're successful before we really start going out there and trying to attract, you know, new industry and things like that. Um, we want, uh, those businesses to be successful, so, um, probably through our, that campaign that we've created with the, the provincial funding. Um, if we do that open call and when we do it next year, it would probably be something that we can include in that if they have existing content that, um, again, we would have to edit it probably to make sure it, it again, fits our messaging and branding.
Any other questions or comments on, uh, on the update? Hearing none, could I have him over in a second or then to receive it? Counselor Sury and Rayal? That's carried. Uh, so next, under information technology, uh, we had added that both, um, both the IT work plan and the, um, updates or enhanced digital security. Um, we moved into, uh, the regular portion of the agenda. Good morning, Mr. March.
Morning, Warren Danglison, members of council. Um, did counsel like for me just to give a quick overview of the work plan or was just like, okay. So the work plan, this is the update of the, uh, of the IT work plan as of September 25th. Uh, in the key findings, I noted some of the things that we have completed to date, including the IT digital strategy, uh, being completed and rolled out and presented to the county and the four municipal councils. Um, the implementation of our cybersecurity managed detection and response plan, uh, security camera system installations in, I think it was about 11 Highlands East locations, some GIS infrastructure upgrades as well as about 2,800 service desk tickets. There were some of the highlights, uh, more details are in the, uh, in the report. Assuming council doesn't want me to read the report line by line, uh, I'm more than happy to answer any questions on, uh, on the work plan.
Questions, Counselor Fury?
I see that you made like 2,800, I would guess their visits there at one point.
Not, not necessarily. Some, like, we tried to do a lot of work remotely if possible, so we can log into people's computers and do a screen share session and help them. But, um, there are, there would be a, a fair portion of those tickets that, yeah, would be.
I think I'd like to know that number because if there's some way we can improve as municipalities, that makes it a lot more efficient and, uh, we, we'd look to get staff that, if, if that's a problem, I don't think it is, but if it is, and, and I think we need to know that information.
So you would like to see a breakdown of onsite versus offsite tickets going forward in these work plan updates?
Like if I called you five times last year, I want to, you know, that's part of the 2,800, I understand that, so.
But depending on whether they could help you remotely or not.
And I've gone three months and haven't had to call anybody. How about that? Anyway, I, I think it's, details are important here so that we can figure how we can improve as municipalities.
Okay, so on my next work plan update, you would like to see a breakdown of the tickets versus bringing a separate report to council on it? Okay.
Um, Counselors Carter and Rayal, did I hear?
So I, I know this isn't directly to the work plan, but the, in the IT world, almost everybody who has any type of software is now only making it available to you through subscription. Um, you know, I have a, my copy of 2013 Office, which is still perfectly serviceable, uh, is not making Microsoft any money. Um, and similarly, I recently looked to try to get a new version of QuickBooks, which is, uh, now only available by subscription. So I understand, you know, from the IT providers that this is a, a way to make money, you know, i- in perpetuity. Uh, what kind of impact is that having on software costs in general, do you think, for, for us and, and all the municipalities?
Yep, through the Warden. It, it's a significant impact. Um, typically with perpetual, what we call perpetual license, where you buy it once and then you keep it until the life of the product, product or till you want to upgrade. We tried to get five years out of the rate up as kind of our standard replacement plan. Now, because like, like our email server is a good example, right? So they're moving to a subscription product, uh, here next year. So whereas we would pay once and then we would keep it for five years, now we're, we're going to have to be paying every year a smaller cost in that one, that one-year cost, but when you look at it over the five years, you're paying more. Whether it's 10% more, 50% more, 80% more, it all depends on the product, but yes, on a, almost without exception, we're paying more per software once we move to subscription versus perpetual.
Do any idea overall on how much more on, on average, do you think?
It's, it's really hard to say. I could, I can bring something to the, uh, on a work plan update report or prepare some information for budget if required. Um, it's really hard to say, but just to give you one example, uh, our network monitoring software, perpetual licensing costs about 1,150, actually, sorry, about $1,500 a, a year. Um, actually, it was, maybe that's not a great idea. This is kind of, this is not necessarily perpetual to subscription. This is just maybe indication of what we're seeing in the market anyway. So we're going from a $1,500 a year product to now just under a $5,000 a year product starting in 2025 with no noticeable changes in the, in the software itself, same functionality, same purpose, it just now has a threefold increase. We have another piece of software that's going from about $500, this is a perpetual license, $500, uh, subscription. Or we pay $500 each year just for some updates, it's moving to a $5,000 a year. And it's some core software that we, that we require to run all of our servers, so we don't have a ton of options to get rid of it. So that's two, you know, egregious examples, but they are two examples.
But that will show up in our budgets, obviously, in your budget when we look at it over the next month or two. Okay.
Mr. CAO?
I think just to add to Counselor Carter's comment, so yeah, so when the budget report comes forward, that's one of the specific areas we've identified, because that's one of the, um, what we call the grosser, grosser inflationary side of things that, that will, that will be clearly identified for council as one of the areas that it's, one of the things we, unfortunately, it's gone up, but we, we can't deviate from it, so that will be part of Andrew's report going forward for the budget.
Go ahead, Mike.
Yeah, a- and if I may, we do a good job of trying to reduce those costs by purchasing collaboratively between the county and the municipalities, because a lot of the software has tiered pricing. You get better pricing for 50 than you do for 10, so we do take advantage of that, but as things are just increasing, 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 um, it's hard to kind of keep that stuff under control.
You know, the last couple of years when we've done our budgeting in Elgonquin Highlands, when we've, when we're putting new software into place, it, the cost is astronomical, just it, it's shocking. Um, Counselor Rayal?
Yeah, as a continuation and follow-up from what Counselor Fury was saying, w- once you've got, uh, that breakdown of, of what we're going to do, would it be possible for you, if you're not already doing it, by the way, to come up with areas where it might make sense to have some kind of an online tutorial that would assist in reducing that number because you're getting the same repetitive problem coming up all the time that could be solved by just more education on the part of the user?
Oh, uh, um, if I may, um, we're, we're going back and talking about the, the breakdown of tickets versus, yes. So one of the things we've got through the IT digital strategy that was highlighted and that we're putting on a work plan is a training strategy for both internal IT staff and the public, or sorry, not the public, but, uh, the rest of staff, county and municipal staff, to try to figure out, okay, where are some items where some training material, training courses, whether we provide it, whether we source something would have a benefit. Um, we did do some work in the past several months with Microsoft 365 Teams specifically, uh, because it was noted as a, um, um, as an item to be, um, sorry, noted as a, as a, uh, an opportunity to expand on training. But there are going to be some things that we still need to come on site for, like if a computer breaks, um, we visit your sites for support for these council meetings, just so we've got somebody close by. Um, there's always going to be a, a subsection of that work that we can't, that, we can't offload. And again, I guess it was, if we offload somebody on your sites, then that increases their workload, so we, yeah.
You might consider a training course for members of council in the, in the transition from Zoom to Teams.
Yes, that would be, if, if that's the route we go for these meetings, there will be, there will be a lot of training provided.
Other questions for Mike on the work plan? Um, could I have a mover in a second or then to receive it? Counselor Dye, you, Counselor McKechnie?
That's that, that, that report ITS 072024 Information Technology Work Plan Update be received as information?
All in favor? That's carried. Uh, and if you could speak briefly to the Enhancing Digital Security and Trust Act?
Okay, uh, so this report is just an informational report at this point, um, not sure if council would have heard about this act from other sources, but, um, the province back in the spring tabled the, uh, tabled Bill 194 Strengthening Cybersecurity and Building Trust in the Public Sector Act. And that enacts the, in a, in a, sorry, Enhancing Digital Trust, Digital Security and Trust Act 2024. So some of the highlights from that are, um, it gives the, the Minister of Public and Business Service Delivery the ability to prescribe requirements for public sector cybersecurity pro- programs. So they can say, thou shall have a program in place and it shall contain X, Y, and Z. It also puts in some regulations regarding, uh, AI in terms of policies and responsible AI usage frameworks. It also enacts some provisions regarding, um, uh, the protection of information for minor, sorry, protection of minor information, information for minors for school boards and children's aid societies, uh, and it makes some changes regards to, um, to FIPAP. Um, not a ton of information has been released, but through consultation with, uh, MISA, uh, which is a municipal association for IT professionals, we have learned that, uh, it's expected the province is going to be rolling this out in phases with things like the school board and hospitals getting hit in phase one, municipality is probably not getting hit to phase two or phase three. Uh, so they figure maybe 2026, 2027 is when we're going to start, um, seeing those directives come down to the municipalities.
Interesting. Go ahead.
Mike, if you could, just for council, notwithstanding the legislation, maybe a overview of what we are doing on the cybersecurity piece, uh, within the county right now, notwithstanding the legislation coming down the road.
For sure. So we have a cybersecurity program, um, we're making incremental changes all the time, mostly are, currently we're also, we're, we're undergoing another cybersecurity gap assessment or just about to sign off on a cybersecurity gap assessment. That's been, um, that's been scheduled for, um, for, that was budgeted for this year. We did one back in 2021, 2022. Basically, we get a gap assessment. They tell us, hey, here's where you guys should start tightening things up, and then we start actioning those things. Um, you know, this year, we, like I mentioned in the work plan, we finished, uh, the implementation of a cybersecurity managed detection and response service. So this is for the county and all the municipalities. So basically, it's a service that they, we put a little bit of software on everybody's computer. Anytime that it detects any anomalous activity, like anything that looks like ransomware, if there's a, a security operations center that gets alerted, they call me and then we deal with the issue. They can also shut it down. So if it does look like, hey, this is a, a major issue like a ransomware infection, they'll just shut that computer down, shut that server down, then call us and then we, we react to it. Um, I could probably do a report on this. There's so many things and, and not all of them are coming to top of the head, top of my mind about what we have done to improve cybersecurity for the last, uh, two to three years. I know also from MISA about the, um, the upcoming legislation. They had said that if, if your municipality in your county has a cybersecurity program and you've been making movements to kind of align your work with some of these cybersecurity standards like NIST and CIS, then you're going to be in better shape. There will probably be things you'll have to do, but it won't be, they shouldn't be as major as if you weren't doing anything at all up to this point. They figure things like having an incident response plan, which we have, um, trying to think of what else they mentioned, like cybersecurity awareness training, which we have. So I expect there will be things we'll have to put in place once the legislation rolls out. At this point, I don't expect it to be too onerous. Now, we could always be surprised, um, but that's, that's my feeling on it so far.
You're, you're doing as much preventative maintenance as you can.
There's always room for improvement, and again, that's why we do these gap analysis to see where we can improve. But yeah, we have been making a lot of strides over the last several years to, uh, to improve our cybersecurity standpoint.
Questions, Counselor Carter?
More a comment than a question, I think, uh, you know, it's, it's always interesting when governments try to regulate, uh, something that they probably don't understand very well. I mean, you know, the world really hasn't come up with strict definitions of what AI is. Um, you know, we use AI, uh, right now, for instance, on, you know, deciding what mail coming in is spam and, and what isn't spam. The credit card companies use it for, if you have an abnormal purchase and they've, and they flag it. You know, you may be able to go out and buy a $4,000 piece of art on your credit card and, and it will go through because that's what you normally do and, and whereas I would, you know, get flagged because I don't buy art very often or something, things like that. These are all AI type things. At the end of the day, I just see this as cause, costing us money. You know, there's going to be, you know, more regulations trying to understand, trying to understand them, trying to meet them. And, uh, so we should expect that this is, you know, going to cost money, whether it's in getting software or something, or just the time, uh, within our IT group to be able to handle this type of stuff. So we should expect that.
I, you know, I'm, I'm glad you raised the, uh, the issue of AI because I, I mean, I have to say that, that my understanding of AI is just like almost zero, e- e- except for the things that I have seen that I know are false, that are created by AI, and that scares me. You know, and I, I, I think it's, it's a kind of a frightening world to step into. And I, I would really like to hear, you know, what your thoughts are about AI and whether in fact it is something that is beneficial to us or not.
AI is a tool and like any tool, it's how you use it. You use a hammer to build a house, it's great. You use it to hit somebody over the head, not so great. Um, I know that's a little glit, but basically at the end of the day, it is the tool, right? So we can use it, you know, we use chat GPT, right? So maybe I'll use it to help clean up some language when I'm trying to write a report because I'm not a wordsmith. Um, where some of the concerns come in is because tools like this are great for now, uh, analyzing data. You can take large data sets, throw it in there and it can pull out information and stats based upon it. But there's the risk of losing control of that information. If you're uploading sensitive information to an AI search engine or an AI engine to do some analysis for you, what is that information and where does it go? So I think what they're trying to do through this is kind of regulate that, just to make sure that organizations are thinking about how they're using AI and what responsible usage of AI is. And to Counselor Carter's point, I mean, AI is getting embedded in everything, so I, probably by the time that we have to put something in place, if we have to identify how we're using AI, it's probably going to be everything we touch on a computer now has some aspect of AI built into it.
Other comments or questions? Well, thank you for that information. Um, I guess I would look for a mover and a seconder to receive the report. Counselors Fury and Carter.
That report ITS 082024 Enhancing Digital Security and Trust Act 2024 be received as information?
All in favor? That's carried.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. Um, so under external boards and agencies, most of the items listed are under the consent agenda. But we have pulled the, both the HKPR minutes and HKPR, um, this is, um, it, items J two and three. So if you, uh, wish to speak to those, sir?
Yeah, the, the, it really boils down to, I'll give you a summary of what, what the important stuff that we came up with. And then at the end, the status of the merger, which is just probably where we, reason why I asked to be talked to. Um, in, in the current priorities that they've got right now, obviously the traditional respiratory season is on us. And so now they're going to be probably in, uh, i- in the latter part of the fall, there'll be a new COVID shot to deal with the, uh, uh, KP2 formulation. Uh, we're rolling out the, uh, influenza shots as we speak, respiratory or RSV. Immunization is now free for infants, pregnant women and seniors as well, so if you choose to want to go that route. MPOX, there was 184 cases in Ontario and, uh, there's a, there's a tremendous encouragement for the virus people to get two doses of vaccine. If you, it, it can really be bad for you. And unfortunately, there's also been one fatality in rabies. And, and what, what the health community is saying, if there is any, any thought that you have been exposed to a bat, please report that and get it done. As far as they know, it is a 100% fatality rate. There is no opportunity to survive if you get rabies in, in today's world. So having said that, that's basically where it is. School immunization is now going off, uh, starting in grade seven, that'll work out well. The, the, uh, public health, uh, dashboards have now been, uh, released as of July 31st. It's a suite of, uh, dashboards that lets the public know about what's going on in terms of health across our particular area. It deals with information and statistics on information, infectious diseases, uh, as they affect the public health. Emergency department visits, hospital discharges, data injuries and, uh, you know, selected chronic diseases, including mortality. selected chronic diseases, including mortality. Uh it has uh Statistics Canada twenty one, twenty twenty one census profile, same kind of information. Uh respiratory infection profile, uh substance overdose profile. And and if you do and are interested in it, you just go to hkprr dot on dot C A and click on health data. And it'll all come up and you can choose what if you want to do, and and new stuff will be added as as we speak. With relation to the HKPR PPH merger, the problem with that is it has to be passed by the province to recognize the new unit. You cannot have a health unit unless it has been officially recognized by the province. The false setting does not show there as yet. There is a severe concern that it may not get in the false setting, uh sitting, or or uh or that. It's supposed to be put into place January first, twenty twenty five. And uh at this point in time, we still haven't got formal confirmation as to whether or not the the budgets that we presented have been approved. So our next merger meeting is on October the fifteenth. And uh no structural changes have been made or will be made until until we know that we are in fact a new unit. So now the question is, can we or can we not be ready for going online in what shape or form, January first, twenty twenty five? I I would think that if something doesn't happen, and this is just me speaking as a representative, if we don't get an answer from the province by at least the first to mid November, I can't see it happening in January. Or January first, twenty twenty five. So will I have more information for you following October the fifteenth? I have no idea.
So I understand that the medical officer of health is coming to council on October the twenty third. Um do you know how if she would be able to, she eat? Uh would be able to speak to that, or?
The answer would be if she has information because they are, Dr. Piggott and Dr. Bocking are speaking with the province continuously. It is it is priority on imagination. If she has information, I am sure she will, she will bring it with her. If if not, a a probably a bulletin would be issued prior to that. We have been told that that uh if 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 she gets the information, we have been, we'll probably be on a twenty four hour notice of of special meeting because all has to be improved. So, yeah, I'm hoping that when she comes here with this.
Just to supplement what Counselor Ray had mentioned, so I had a meeting with Dr. Bocking and her staff uh two weeks ago regarding the budget. Uh and so Dr. Bocking is coming on the twenty third to speak specifically to the budget and the the implications of when transitioned that the merger does occur because it has, the budgets will be different. Um so that's my understanding, what the 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 discussions coming forward on. And so that will be part of her uh her presentation. And hopefully, um to Counselor Ray's point, is that we'll get some more clarification because it's not an if it's gonna happen, it's when it's gonna happen. And so.
Counselor Carter?
Is uh is the health unit budget uh January to December, or is it run to the end of March like the provincial ministries do?
Yes.
Typically, we we work on the fiscal year because that's how the taxation system works.
Yeah, okay.
For the municipalities. But for the funding formula from the province, it's it's the the end of the year, it's it's January, or excuse me, it's March thirty first. And in that news, March thirty first, twenty twenty five will be the end of the first year of funding. But we'll figure.
Counselor Dayu?
Back to the bats for just a minute. Um because bats are such an important part of our ecosystem, I wonder if you wouldn't mind either now or at another council meeting, just verifying for us. But bat rabies is exceptionally rare, isn't it? And if I'm not mistaken, I think fatality is pretty high after symptoms develop. But if you're treated right away after contact, it's extremely easy to prevent. So just so we don't ever run on people going out and killing all the bats in their bell, in in their bell towers. Yeah.
If if I may, the 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 last fatality in Canada, as far as we know, was in nineteen sixty seven. And and there has not been a a uh a case of developed rabies that that we know of since then. But you're absolutely right. If you even remotely think that you've come in contact with a bat, the bats themselves, the odds of a bat being having rabies are also very small, but in light of the fact that the that if not addressed properly, it is a fatal disease. So you want to be proactive in how you handle it. Uh it's not a complicated cure. It can be done as 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 Counselor Dayu said. If if you have the 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 proper inoculations, it's it's virtually totally curable. It's preventable. Yeah. Go ahead and promote it, but it but no, don't don't kill all the bats, please. I I don't like mosquitoes.
So there's no no concern, like the concern for rabies is strictly related to bats, no longer with dogs?
The answer is yes. It it it'll pick any mammal. That's not the point, but it's most likely in bats because bats are the ones that that uh that have a tendency to spread it. And it's it, most of the current that we have had has been with bats, which are right, it could be foxes, could be skunks, could be, could be anything in the wild. But um in this particular case, because it was a bat that created the fatality, it is that was extended. So, yeah, but if you had the same problem, if a wild fox were to uh to bite you, uh I would I would think you would do the same thing.
Uh other questions that I see your hands, that's great. So uh we we had pulled from the consent agenda both the HKPR minutes as well as the HKPR meeting summary. So have you spoken to both or? Okay. So could I have a mover and a seconder then to receive the approved minutes, Counselor Carter? Uh Counselor Dayu?
That the approved minutes from the June twentieth, twenty twenty four, Halbert and Coretta Pine Ridge District Health Unit be received for information?
All in favor? And a mover and a seconder then to a uh receive the uh meeting summary? Did you wish to speak to that? Counselor Carter, Counselor Dayu?
That the September nineteenth, twenty twenty four, Halbert and Coretta Pine Ridge District Health Unit meeting summary be received for information?
All in favor? That's carried. Counselor Carter, did you wish to comment?
Uh it was just that.
It it just from a process that we haven't received the the meetings from that, minutes from that meeting. That's why they're not on the yet, so.
Was there uh something uh of import that you wish to bring to our attention? Then I think we can do that. As information?
Yeah, um so we we had the Jack meeting and most of the Jack meeting, of course. You know, this is social services, child services, and housing. Um and uh something else that's specific only to CKL, but um we're really talking about budgets. Now, the budget process down in Coretta Lakes has changed because of the new status of the mayor. They now have a budget committee that is reviewing the budget before it goes up to the council, to the mayor and council. The situation is that it's really difficult to understand government funding. And uh you know, it at at many times, if you review it, it seems capricious at best. You know, it's it's all over the place. And um our situation, you know, as an example, with the uh uh daycare, I think the daycare waiting is six and a half years in Coretta Lakes and seven and a half years here. So generally, if you want daycare services, even if you haven't met your spouse, you should probably apply now, uh if you want to have any help, hope of a child getting into it. Um our situation with housing and homelessness is uh is bleak. Um and so what's happening is that the human services in City Coretta Lakes has come up with their budget. And their budget is, you know, depending on the area, is you know, twenty plus percent increases in the budget. Uh obviously, here in um in Halliburton, we pay a portion of it, each each of the models that uh are slightly different, but in general, you know, we pay a portion of that. Depending on the number of units of housing or the number of cases of, you know, in the social services and so on. So what's happened is that at both, and I I happen to be on the board of the Housing Corporation also, we have the, we have received the budget, but it has not been approved by either board, either by the the Jack Committee or the Housing Corporation. So it's now going to the Budget Committee of the City Coretta Lakes, and who knows what will happen at that point. But the point I'm trying to make is that there could be a substantial up charge or, you know, increase in the budget for those social services, child services, and housing, which directly affects our budget. And we, you know, we have to work our way through that, but we're somewhat at the mercy of that CKL. You know, Budget Committee, who's going to approve the budget for human services?
So these increases that we might be facing are over and above the increase that we've already been given to understand we will be impacted by, or it's, okay.
One, same, but um maybe slightly different than what we were we were given because they've been updated a couple of times. And it's just, look, there's when you're working in that area, you know, you're you're tasked with meeting certain goals. So you build the structure of your department or of your staffing to meet those goals. But, you know, that costs money. And do we have the money to be able to pay for that? And so this is, it's just, I'm just heads up as we go into our budgeting process.
Do do we need to pass a resolution to receive that that reporter just to? Okay.
Yes, ju- just if if I can build on Counselor Carter's points, he's correct. We've been and one thing I will say is is the between last year and this year, the the amount of interaction and information shared between CKL and ourselves is is increased dramatically. Um we've received a series, a set of numbers back and forth between uh the staff levels. And Counselor Carter is correct, yes, there is a significant increase being contemplated on the social services piece. However, having said that, um unlike previous years, um on October twenty third, as I mentioned, when the 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 medical officer health will be here to discuss their budget, um uh Ron Tera, the C A O for City Coretta Lakes, as well as the Director of Social Services, will be here as well to address their budget increases and and take in any questions that council may have. And I've warned them, there'll probably be lots, but they are coming forward. So but they they have been very upfront with us in the numbers provided. We've built them into our in our forecast and projections for the budget that will be coming to council uh in early November or mid-November, I guess it is. So yes, it is something that has impacted us. Um but we're doing our our best between the two organizations to to mitigate that as much as we can.
Um on that same note, it is really, really um encouraging to see that the levels of information exchange between the CKL and and Halliburton are are improving dramatically, that, you know, we're we are getting more information and updates and better communication between both, because there was a time when it was pretty, to use your word, bleak. So good to see that. Um, okay, next on the agenda is correspondence and a request for support for the basic income bill. Any comments or questions on that? Could we have a mover and a seconder then to approve that, providing support?
Just for clarification, the motion is actually just to receive.
Okay.
If council wants the support, that would, we'd have to redraft the motion. It's just a matter just to receive.
So question, uh receive or support? Counselor McKechnie? I did, but you know, we get some clarification on. Receive, okay, moved by Counselor Burton, seconded by Counselor McKechnie.
Uh that Halbert County Council acknowledged receipt of the September nineteenth, twenty twenty four correspondence from the Halbert and Coretta Pine Ridge District Health Unit.
All in favor? That's carried. So I guess at this point, we're finished with our open agenda. Do we um pass a motion to go into close and and just have a pause?
Yes, we have. We have a bit of a break between the two sessions. Uh we, one or two things, we can just adjourn and then come back and we'll close, or we can go and close and then adjourn. It's up to the the will of council. Process.
Okay, so I guess I would look to see us adjourn the open session of council for now. Could I have a mover and a seconder for that? Counselor Fury, Counselor Burton? All in favor? Guaranteed. We will call the meeting to order. Um if I could have a mover and a seconder to adopt the agenda for the meeting, please. Counselors Carter and.
For order, since we're not going to the close.
I'm gonna speak to that. Okay, go ahead.
So we don't need to prove the agenda for the close. So we don't need to approve the agenda for the closed session?
We did it already for the first one. Continuation of the first meeting.
Okay. Just for the, for the record of the public, we were initially intending to have this portion of the meeting enclosed because it is a training session for council, but we thought in, in the interest of being open and transparent, might be an informative session for the public as well, so we will have the meeting in open session. I'd like to welcome Mr. Pine, who's going to give us some instruction today and turn the meeting over to you.
Thanks very much, Your Honor. It's always good to be back here in the council chambers. I really enjoyed, and I appreciate the opportunity to come and talk today a little bit about open and closed meetings. It really is just an information session, but feel free to, you know, ask any, any questions. I'll try to answer them best that I can, but I don't anticipate there's anything that would require closed meeting discussion unless you want to go in and talk about something like legal matters or something like that. So it's, it's great. I have a deck, is it ready to go, Gary? So as I said, really today is about talking about open and closed. They, they go together, that's why we want to talk about it. And I know that the Ombudsman suggested that there be this, this session. And I think this, I think would fulfill that obligation, I hope it would anyway. So I say I'm really pleased to be here to talk. Go to the next slide, please. We've gone, I think the introductions we've already done, but really it's just, again, it's a, it's an information session, hopefully it's a bit of education, an opportunity to ask questions, and we'll just walk, walk through what I think are sort of the key things in terms of context, some of the legislative requirements. And then some suggestions around staying on course as you go through your normal day of work as a group of elected officials. Then, as I say, happy to answer any questions as we go or at the end. Next slide. So just a little bit about me, some of you, I've had the great pleasure of knowing for quite a long period of time, but I've spent my working career in municipal affairs, about 43 years before I actually finally pulled the, the official pin and went into retirement last year from the County of Hastings. But 33 of those years has been as a, as a Chief Administrative Officer. The last 21 were in Hastings County, which, which was fantastic. And others in a place like the City of Queenie West, when we set that up in 1997 and 98. And that was fun. I have done a lot of other things, working with A M O as the Secretary Treasurer or their executive and board, on the L A S Services Board for 13 years and, you know, down the list in terms of some of the activities. I've also worked for the province of Ontario. I did nine official years. I started actually with the province and then went into the municipal sector and then went back after the City of Queenie West stint and was Regional Director in Kingston for Municipal Affairs. And many of you will know I spent a long time working with East Ontario Regional Network and we all worked together on those things. People have been on the board, Chair of E R N. I continue to do a little bit of work with E R N around the Indigenous consultations for the Cell Gap project. And that's been fun and interesting and continues now until we get through the end of that project. And I guess the last thing I would say in terms of introduction, I did a, an interesting gig, if I can call it, with the, with the Ministry of, of Health in looking at emergency health services and public health until the pandemic came along. Covid came along, we were on our way to doing some interesting consultations on that. And of course, pandemic did like other things, put a halt to that work. And now they're, they're in the process of looking at some other ways of doing business. So that's a little bit about me. I hope that, you know, in my experience of 33 years, the C A O probably picked up a little bit about open and closed meetings, so happy to try and share it today. But the context really for, in Ontario, for open and closed meetings, if you go to the next slide. And I like this quote from the Ombudsman in the sense that this is really where he or she will, will be coming from in terms of how they see municipalities managing open and closed meetings, about transparency and, and allowing the public to understand and see what we're doing as municipal councils through that process. So, and to that end, of course, the Municipal Act is the guiding piece of legislation around open and closed meetings. And so really it is about this notion of transparency for the public and how we do our business. The next slide. And also that, you know, it's been to the Supreme Court too in terms of, of meetings. And the Supreme Court of Canada, of course, as you've probably aware, has a point of view on this as well in terms of open and closed meetings. And the fact that open meetings are essential to democracy is, I guess, the bottom line from the court's point of view. So that's really trying to set the context. And as they, in the next slide, as the Ombudsman says, when in doubt, open the meeting, which is, you know, you've done today, actually, in terms of conducting the meeting, which is great. So it really is, and I think it's, it's fair and I think it's really important. Other levels of government don't necessarily operate in this basis, as you know, in terms of how they conduct their businesses, whether it's provincial or federal government. There's different rules for them. But for us in the municipal sector, it really is about letting the public know what we're doing as best we can, except for those certain circumstances that we're going to talk about where it makes sense or you need to go into a closed session to discuss matters. So that's really sets the context of, of open meetings in Ontario. And then we can talk about the exception. So if we go to the next slide, and there's some key definition in terms, I thought we could just walk through as a bit of a reminder about, about things. If we can go to the next slide. So Section 238 in the Municipal Act is really where the statute tells us that we need to operate in, in open session in a way. And that deals with any meeting that is, you know, whether it's a regular meeting or a special meeting, a committee meeting, those sorts of things, a local board, et cetera, where there's a quorum of members present and you're discussing or otherwise dealing with matters that will affect the business of the municipality or the organization where there's decision making going on. So it's just important to know where the legislative requirement comes from. I'm sure you're aware of that. Next slide. The Ombudsman talks a lot about informal gatherings for social purposes or, and whether or not those things are considered meetings. Typically, they're, they're not unless you're talking about advancing the business of the organization, the municipality or the committee. So obviously as elected officials, you need to be able to talk with each other. But it's when you just turn to doing business or advancing the business where you have to think about, is this a meeting and should it be open? So just a reminder about the difference between informal and regular. Next slide. Pardon me, quorum. Just a reminder, and you know this, I know you know this, it's just the minimum number of, of members of a body that who are required to be present in order for the body to exercise its power or authority. So just keeping that in mind, just a, it's a definition. Next slide. Again, the Ombudsman talks a little bit about emails, texts and phone. There's a question, it comes up fairly regularly, at least I heard it fairly regularly. Is it really a meeting if you're, you know, you're emailing with each other? Or if you're texting or you're on a call? If there's a quorum and you're doing business, it's likely a meeting. So just remember that. If you're doing business and you're materially advancing the business of, of council or the committee or the organization, you might get, it might be good to remember it's probably a meeting. It needs to be in the open session unless there's exceptions, of course. Committees in the next slide. Similarly, the rules apply to committees around open meetings. And the Act defines it as any advisory or other committee, as the slide says, or subcommittee, which at least 50% of the members are also members of one or more of councils or local boards. So again, committee, the same rules will apply around open and closed. And what about local boards in the next slide? Again, it's the Ombudsman and the Act set out some examples of what we're talking about here in terms of what's a local board. There's the municipal services boards, transportation commissions, I don't think you have that here necessarily. Or there's things like boards of health, planning boards, et cetera. So again, just important to know if you're a member of one of those committees or those committees need to know the rules under which open meetings and closed meetings apply. So there's just again, some definitions around that. But there is also specifically a notation of what is not a local board, and that's the next slide. So there are conservation authorities, police service boards, public library boards or hydro companies under the Act, that was Section 142, and certain municipal corporations, which I haven't found very many examples of, to be honest, at this stage. Maybe your staff would know. But these are specifically excluded in terms of definition of a local board.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Counselor Carter.
On the committees. So I can think of a committee we have that is made up of a few members of this council and a few members of a neighboring council. And together we make up the majority, the overwhelming majority of, of that board. Does that then become an official committee?
I, I would say yes.
But if you're, you're talking about, but they're not, they're not a quorum of any particular council, but rather they're from different councils.
Right.
Yeah.
But we would be, by this definition, a committee and therefore subject to the rules.
I, I would say you're advancing in some fashion the, the business of the municipalities that you're representing. That would be one test, I think, that you would, would cover it. Gary, I don't know if you want to jump in?
Yeah, I would say if, and if the decisions of the board directly or indirectly affect the operations or the decision making of the municipality, then it qualifies under, under the provisions of the Act.
Yeah, joint board are pretty common.
Say you have a committee of 10 and you have, you know, two members from Minden and two members from Islands East and two members from, you're, you're not, you're, you're not a quorum of any particular municipality.
You're a quorum of that committee though, I think.
Yeah, if the elected officials make up a quorum of the committee and their, their business is advancing, directly or indirectly advancing the business of your, your individual collective councils, then you're, it's.
Yeah.
I'm surprised to see that, you know, that those that are not considered a, a, a library board, I mean, the library board normally in our library board acts, sort of basically acts by through with the same rules. And the police service board.
They, they have their own statute that governs their, their operations, generally speaking.
And I would wonder about, I mean, we're, we're about to enter into, to the world of municipal corporations, you know, to operate certain functions, and I would wonder how, how that would work as well. I just hadn't, we hadn't thought about that yet.
Yeah, I think it's important, we spent a fair bit of time when we were establishing something like E R N, looking at what are the rules under which it's incorporated. And so you need to, to go through that process to determine what kind of corporation it is and what rules might apply.
One other thing, and under the terms of the incorporated body, their bylaws and, and constitution would actually specify things around conflict of interest of, you know, openness and transparency, be part of the separately of that body that would prob, in, in case some of the things that what you're considering would mirror what we're responsible for under as a council.
I see, Counselor Carter, it looks like you still have a continued question.
Just to clarify, on that committee, so then therefore that committee meetings would have to be public.
Unless there are matters of business that would meet the exceptions. I think that's the bottom line is you, you should be approaching this as a meeting should be open unless there are specific reasons to be closed. That's the safest approach.
Counselor Ray.
I'm pretty sure I have, I know what the answer is going to be and I certainly hope it is. If you're getting to, like you go to a conference and you're getting, you're, you're, you're with a group of, of elected officials from different municipalities and you have an impromptu gathering and you start discussing issues related to each individual municipality and looking at, no. That is not a committee, they just got together for supper or whatever else seemed to be important at the time. And we start talking about issues that are commonly shared across each or all of the municipalities and how they have or we have respectively handled them. I am hoping that is not a meeting.
I would not see it as a meeting unless you've got a quorum of your own council members with you.
And you can have a discussion without actually furthering.
That's the key as well. There's, there's those really two important, I think, tests. You know, are you advancing the interests, the, the business of, of the municipality? Do you have a quorum, generally speaking? But politics is about sharing information with your colleagues, whether it's in different municipalities or others. So that's normal. And I don't think the Ombudsman or, or the Act wants to stop that. That's not necess, it's about whether you start specifically advancing the business of your municipality, generally speaking.
Counselor Diane.
Two quick questions. First, regarding local, what is not a local board? I see police services boards. O P P detachment boards are a different beast altogether from a police services board. Do you know if there's a word on the street yet about whether they will fall under, under this classification or the previous?
I don't know, I'd have to look at that, sorry.
That would, I think.
If I, if I might, so there, the, the requirements for the police services, sorry, the detachment boards are similar to the police services boards, they're similar and then take the same aspect of a library board. While they don't, aren't subject to our rules, they have their own rules that mirror the requirements of, of municipal councils or regarding, the majority of the meetings are, can only be closed under a very small piece of it. But it's, it's the same general rules apply, just not in this form that, that we're talking about today.
And I have a second question. Could we split the hair on advancing the business of government? I wonder if that means a decision is taken formally or informally when there is a quorum? Or whether it applies to when you're simply discussing things and offering perhaps new insights on things, but there's no actual advancement of the business of government?
I think that there, there is a bit of a possibility of splitting hairs, a little bit on that. I'm always been of the, of the opinion that we should always err on the cautious side in terms of what it is. So to avoid getting into situations is always better, I think, to, to try and do that, you know, in, in the right format and in the right process. But I think the Ombudsman, I'd have to go back and look and some of the other integrity commissioners do sometimes can split a hair on that in terms of it. But I guess it's the degree to which you're advancing or not advancing. I, I should say at the outset, I'm not a lawyer and I'm not, I don't act as an integrity commissioner. So some of the finer legal side points, you know, probably need to have someone who's got that background for it.
If I may, then one of the reference points to your point, Counselor, is if you look at the City of London decision.
Yes.
They went in great depth over the nuance you're exactly talking about. And I think, you know, the Ombudsman was very clear at what differentiated one from the other. So it has gone back and forth before, and I think that was around breakfast meetings with the City of London.
It's, it's kind of a fine line because I, I know that, that quite often you find maybe a quorum of your council having lunch together. And you, you, you work in the same, and it sort of goes to what you were talking about. You, you're all working in, you know, in the same environment. You can't help but talk about similar matters of interest. But to me, it's whether you've actually, because of the discussion you've had, decided to go in a specific direction rather than just talking about the pros and cons or something. But, you know, as Jim said, you know, err on the side of caution.
Yeah.
Counselor Ray.
Yeah, staying on that same subject that I was talking about, a lot of times when we go to conferences, not only do you have the networking amongst the people, but you get some pretty dynamic presentations that get your mind thinking. And at the end of the day, if you get two or three people together, did they understand the way the information presented the same? And oftentimes that's not the case. I would go to a, I would go to a specific room and, and I would have the information presented to me and I would interpret it this way. Someone else would go and they would say, hey, I heard that, but I understood it to be this. Now, the bad news is sometimes when we go to a. Now, the bad news is sometimes when we go to conferences, there could be, by sheer coincidence, three of us or four of us to make quorum from the same municipality or same organization. We're not trying to advance anything, we're trying to figure out if we understood what it was that was presented to us. And so now, at the end of the day, what do you do? You have to wait and have different meetings at different points in time? Or wait until the information is stale, and you can't really figure out what it was that you started in the first place, because now you're doing? That's the kind of problems that I think that's not what we're talking about here. I think we're not trying to advance the overall positioning of any given group as an entity, but really understanding what was presented to us, so that when we go back to our respective groups, we got some kind of an understanding of what it was that we were just taught. Am I making sense?
Yeah, no, it's a very good point. I think by its very nature, when you're at a conference, it's an educational opportunity for you. You should be able to take information in, you're not, you're not there to make, you're not advancing the interests of the municipality by trying to make decisions, you're receiving information, it's education. So at that point, I think you're, that's why you're there, that's why you're at an AMO, that's why you're at Aroma, is to get information and to share it, that's expected. That's really, you know, can you imagine if that wasn't allowed? That would be just, it would be, yeah.
Carry on.
Okay, just very briefly, the next couple of slides are just really more specific, as we go to the next slide about the law of the municipal act, we'll go to the next slide. Section, you're going to scroll through this. Section 236 is just defines where you can have meetings, section 237 is about quorum, we just talked about it. And then 238 requires, you know, a procedural bylaw to be put in place, and I know you've got one here, and you've got one locally. Section, the next slide, section 239 is where we actually talk about open meetings and the requirements, and it's all meetings shall be open to the public unless there's the exception. That's the statute, so we're just giving you a reference to the municipal act. Section 239.2 is where you start to talk about, the act talks about the exceptions. And so this is the part where it's always, you know, this is where you need to rely on staff in a way is to make sure that if your matter is coming up, and you think it should be going in a closed session, you need to appreciate what those exceptions really mean, what they really are, so that you, you know, don't get yourself into trouble with contravening the open meeting section, so.
And I think in some cases, you mentioned earlier how councils can tend to stray from the specific topic that you're, you know, in order to get a bit of understanding, the discussion kind of goes back and forth, and you stray from what your original intent is, and yet when you went into the meeting with a specific goal in mind, you know, that you probably met the requirements of a closed session. It's when you get into the closed session and stray from the topic that you run into trouble.
Yeah, we're going to talk a little bit about that, that trap sometimes that happens. But yeah, so when you're thinking about the need from your point of view, that you should be going to closed session, you need to think about these particular exceptions that are outlined in the act and what they mean. Does the matter fit within one of those, the ones that you're going to identify going into closed meeting for, that it actually fits? You know, so it's just something, again, and that's why you have staff who you can turn to and say, does this really fit? Should we be going to close for this particular matter? So we'll just walk through reasonably quickly the exceptions, and we can talk about them as we go if you want. So in the next slide, we talk about two things, security of the property of the municipality and personal matters that are about an identifiable individual. In the second case, you know, talking about your salary grid, you know, with the positions, that's not closed meeting information. But if you're going to talk about a specific individual or a performance matter, of course, you're going to go and use this section for going into close, because those things rightly should be done in closed meetings. In terms of the security of the property of the municipality, it's interesting that there is, in the act, there's no definition of the word, security. So now you've got to go and look at what adjudicators, like the ombudsman, might be saying about what does that really mean? And the ombudsman, obviously, has a body of information that we all should pay attention to, because he or she does a lot of these closed meeting investigations, along with, if you have a different closed meeting investigator, they'll have their own body too, but really, as I was looking at it, it's, this section, the ombudsman says it has to be about property that has to be, must be owned by the municipality, and the council must discuss measures to prevent specific loss or damage to that property. So it's fairly narrow and fairly specific when it comes to this issue of the security of the property of the municipality. It isn't about, for instance, you know, we're getting an appraisal done of a particular property. In fact, I think the ombudsman ruled on that in a couple of cases, that does not meet the test of going into closed. You're getting an appraisal. It's not, it's not something that should be done in closed session when you receive that. So again, you look to your staff to say, does this fit, does it not fit? But there isn't any particular definition laid out in the act of what security means. So we have to look to what the sort of the jurisprudence is or the ombudsman's decisions are.
Councillor Ray.
I can buy that entire package when we're selling something, but I'm a little bit of uncomfortable buying it. Because as soon as we start to talk about a specific or one or two locations where something could be built, we are now going to be looking at the price of that dollar. And we're not even sure that's what we're going to build yet, because we're not really sure where we are. So at the end of the day, this is the kind of thing that gets me a little bit upset, is because what we're going to be doing is we're going to be telling the public, and they have the right to know, there's no argument to that. But we haven't decided, we're merely just determining which location might be the best, and from there, should we proceed with the project? But as soon as we turn around and say, this particular lot seems to be the best one, well, you own it.
Yeah, I think if you're in that negotiation.
You would say, I would like to buy it, well, based on what we heard, yeah, the original price was a hundred grand, but that was well.
Yeah. Have you run across that?
Let's just say it's a possibility.
Gary?
It's, in my understanding, again, is if you're in the process of doing a negotiation or something, it is a broader, that's not security property, that's dealing with, it's, I think, Mr. Pines.
There's another exception.
Further down, but you're talking about, there is cases where that is permitted in closed session, because it's not about the security of property, it's about negotiations to acquire or sell.
Yeah, again, they go, the ombudsman is pretty clear, it's about measures that you would discuss to prevent loss or damage to a property. The negotiation piece is another exception.
You know, it's interesting, because I just recently had a perfect example of this, where there was a land swap to the, you know, benefit of everyone concerned between a municipal body and another not-for-profit organization. And, you know, there was an agreement made about, okay, we're going to get both parcels surveyed, we'll pay for it upfront, you pay us back, just to try and save money, council agreed. Okay, we'll move forward with that. There came to be more complications with the swap, more things that needed to be done, and a subsequent agreement made by council. And the determination had been, we already made a decision in closed that we were going to partner on this, so it doesn't need to be enclosed, just because the terms are different. However, there is another outside party interested in the property. So would that become the security of the property?
Yeah, that's a good question. I guess, I'm not sure, depending on how much had been already discussed in open and where that line is. That's why, this is where it's easy for me to say, hmm, should maybe this is one to talk about with the solicitor, I'm not sure. I don't know, Gary, if you have an opinion?
I would agree, I mean, that type of nuances is kind of really solidly in the gray area. But to simplify or generalize, going back to Jim's earlier comment, is that if you're part of the negotiations, and if it's something that has never been spoken publicly before, well, then you'd be leaning towards the exception. If you've already spoken to it, and it's just a slightly different version of what's already public, then you're probably into the public's portion of it.
This is where we decide.
Yeah. Okay, well, we can move on to the next couple. Go to the next slide, yeah. So maybe just do the second piece as well. This is where the acquisition or disposal of property is, the one we were just talking, I think councillor, just a few minutes ago. And that would certainly fit when you're talking about negotiating the purchase or sale of land. Labor relations or employee negotiations is a common area and one to be used regularly, particularly if you're doing, you know, if you're discussing collective agreements or negotiations, those sort of things quite rightly are done in closed session or something about an identifiable individual. Those things obviously fit within the exception, and you should do those in closed session. Pretty standard stuff, next slide. Litigation or potential litigation, obviously, solicitor-client privilege is very much protected, and Supreme Court has ruled on this as well. But if there's any potential or litigation that's going on, certainly that falls within the acceptable exception, and that can be done in closed session. The second piece, a matter under any other act, in fact, there are very few pieces of legislation that I'm aware of, and the ombudsman speaks to this too, where there are specific exemptions from the open meetings. So I think the Emergency Measures Act might be one that, where there's specific requirements around how to deal with a matter. But there are very few acts that I'm aware of that set out a different course around open and closed meetings. So I think this is a catch-all, just in case there is a piece of legislation that comes along that specifically says you can't deal with this matter in open, you'd have to deal with it in closed.
Councillor Carter?
I think the litigation or potential litigation, too many people try to hang their hat on that one. As we understand it, that potential litigation has got to be not quite a certainty, but almost a near certainty that it's imminent and about to happen. It's not like, oh, if we have this discussion, that guy will surely sue us. You know, so that's, it's not, it's very narrow there, and I think there's been a number of court cases or ombudsman's ruling in the last little while that really narrows that. And then the other one that I think is important is advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege is that if your solicitor is in the meeting with you, and you're discussing the issue with the solicitor, that's different than if the solicitor just happens to be in the room, and the rest of council is having a discussion. So that discussion that the council is happening is not necessarily solicitor-client privilege. So it's, you, sometimes solicitors just get called into something, and then the meeting goes off this way, and they're left sitting there, just because they're there doesn't protect everything.
It's the matter that's important that you're talking about. That's key. I actually noticed in reading the ombudsman's report on the county, that he referenced the point that during the discussion, one of the, I don't know which one of you or who it was, but raised the issue that you'd spoken with a solicitor about a part of the matter. And I think if I read the ombudsman's report correctly, the ombudsman said, you could have gone in to close for that. You were relaying advice received as an individual member of council, and that was legitimately, could have been dealt with in closed session. I think if I read that report right, I could be wrong, but only that portion, yeah. So again, I think going to the matter of solicitor-client privilege.
Please, you okay? Yeah.
Do you want to pause? I think somebody should go with. Yeah. Yeah, but, good time.
We pass, we officially pause?
Take five minutes?
Let's take five?
Yeah, we'll take a 10-minute break.
Okay.
Okay. Let's continue. Yes, absolutely.
Because mine was just kind of a piggyback after, off of what Counselor Carter had asked, so. Getting into too much detail. So somebody, say something happens to somebody on municipal property and they want to be reimbursed for something. But they're not threatening litigation, but they want it to be on an agenda. Do we discuss that in open or do we discuss that in closed? Even though they haven't, they haven't threatened litigation, but it could be possibly litigation. Something's happened, they're asking for some money to be reimbursed for some damages to their property or that type of thing.
So this is an informal discussion with you as, as an individual counselor? Or is there something in writing? Again, if someone's, if someone is threatening litigation.
There was no threat of litigation. Somebody has written a letter to council saying, this happened on your property. This part of my property, something that I own was damaged and I would like to be reimbursed for it.
One of the first things that I would do is be talking to my insurer and, and getting advice and input from him, if it's a claim of some kind. Gary?
Yeah, the only thing I would do is go back to Jim's earlier comment, Ryan, your staff is that my personal advice would be not allowing the person to come to council and direct, or a letter that would be forwarded, the staff and the staff would do some investigation figures. So maybe, yes, it's reimbursement, it's like stone dropped off the back of the dump truck and split somebody's window open. Okay, that's an insurance matter, right? But yeah, because you're given a situation where it's all good until somebody responds, right? And that's, that's the potential litigation part.
And I guess if, Gary, if the, if the letter somehow got to council agenda, the reference would be refer it back to staff for a report, which, and then automatically be going back to the insurance saying, you know, is this a claim that's legitimate? And then they would decide whether they were going to litigate it or not litigate it or, or recommend payment and all that sort of stuff. So, yeah. Just I want, speaking of going back, just to the first exception around security of the municipality. And Gary made a good point with me at the break was, and this certainly would be true, but your cybersecurity plan. Obviously, that's the kind of thing that you'd want to do in camera. At least that would be my recommendation because really there's nothing more concerning for me. At this, is our security around our data and access to that data? And I know Mike is probably very familiar with this and all of the work that's going into, into protecting you as an organization, you as your municipality locally and at, at the county here. Cyber is one of those things that you need to discuss it in camera. You don't want, if there's warts in your system or if you're as firewall as you can be, you don't necessarily want that out in the public domain for people to attack, if I could put it that way. Would that be right, Mike? Yeah. But it was a good point to raise it would clearly fit in, at least in my opinion, under that first exception where you'd want to speak to that.
Counselor Ray?
It also applied to property security as well. I mean, cybersecurity, we were all aware of that, but there's also property security, setting up things so that people, if they do decide to break in, can get caught, but obviously if we break them where it is.
Yes. I, I would, I would be comfortable in that being done in camera. You're trying to protect, these are actions you're taking to protect your property. All good? Okay, and go to the next set of exceptions. Information that's been explicitly provided or supplied to in confidence by, you know, the federal or provincial governments or a territory or crown agency, those are, are protected and need to be dealt with in camera, if there's specifically done in confidence, for confidentiality. And then there's this whole piece around the trade secrets supplied to you that where there might be some financial impact or labor relations information. Again, you're going to think about these things before you go in camera to see whether they really need to be. But certainly there are times when you need to, to go in and to discuss something in camera based on, on these particular matters in this exception. So it's there for you to use if necessary. And whether it's a trade secret or, or a commercial matter where there might be some financial impact. So. Gary?
On a specific example, that second one is that's where a lot of your economic development stuff falls into. When you're doing, doing with site selectors and that, you get a lot of information on their needs regarding servicing, stuff like that. That, that we used that one a lot when I was doing economic development on site selection stuff.
Okay, yeah, all right, we can move on. I think I've already covered this one, the trade secret where there, where there's potentially monetary value. And then a plan or a position or, or criteria where there's negotiations that could be involved as well. So again, you know, each matter is going to be dealt with, you're going to look at the circumstances and decide whether you need to be in camera or, or not for something where there may be a negotiation that might be necessary. I don't know what that ultimately could be, could be something to do with development or something in that area. I think that's again where, you know, in economic developments, Gary indicated you, you, you can't be out there publicly at that particular moment in time, maybe when you're ready in, in terms of advancing the idea. So. That one, and then I think.
Just a question from Counselor Carter and another from Counselor Dayu.
So could you speak to it a little bit more from the perspective of bids on tenders? So for instance, you know, we, we get a, we have a tender, an RFP out there and some people bid, obviously the winning bid is announced because that's what we're going to pay. But we don't necessarily with public feelings from the other competitors.
Right.
And just, maybe just expand on that.
Yeah, I, I think typically you, the successful bidder, you do that, you, you won't necessarily be releasing, for instance, the bid submission itself, because there may be confidential information in that bid, third-party information where you, it's commercially sensitive. So you're not releasing that information. And likewise, people who submit bids on that may have information here that's considered business confidential and stuff. So typically you're not releasing that information, the details, the full details of those bid submissions. And I think that's, that's legitimate.
Just with everyone's indulgence, we're just going to take another five-minute break.
Okay.
Okay. We're back in, back in session. I think Counselor Dayu has a question.
Yes, thanks. So what we were just talking about regarding trade secrets, negotiations, scientific data, et cetera. What if it's not a competitive negotiation? And I'll choose as an example, earlier this morning, we were talking about the Dorset Bridge, which is owned not only by Halliburton County, but also by District of Muskoka. Could Halliburton County go into closed session to discuss the sort of financial arrangement we might want to propose to our neighboring district? Or because it's not competitive, would that have to be an open? And that's just an example.
The, the nature of the, of the discussion is a financial discussion?
Yes.
Are you negotiating? Gary?
More along the lines of a partnership, it's a, for my ears, it's a shared road agreement between Muskoka and us.
Right.
With that, with a bridge.
A bridge.
I wouldn't see that as being closed.
I wouldn't see it as being closed myself either.
So if I might just give it an example, an example on the trade secret, and Mr. Pine may remember this from years ago, we worked together. On economic development thing, we had an industry company wanting to come to Trent and they had a specific proprietary way of manufacturing and it required them to ask us for something special, right? And
Okay, we're back in back in session. I think Counselor Dayu has a question.
Um, yes, thanks. Uh, so what we were just talking about regarding trade secrets, negotiations, scientific data, et cetera. What if it's not a competitive negotiation? And I'll choose as an example. Earlier this morning, we were talking about the Dorset Bridge, which is owned not only by Halliburton County, but also by District of Muskoka. Could Halliburton County go into closed session to discuss the sort of a financial arrangement we might want to propose to. Our neighboring district, or because it's not competitive, would that have to be an open? And that's just an example.
The the nature of the. Of the discussion is a financial discussion.
Yes.
Are you negotiating? Gary, you're.
More along the lines of a partnership, it's a familiar, it's a shared road agreement between Muskoka and us.
Right.
With that, with a bridge.
The bridge. Hmm.
I wouldn't see that as being.
I I wouldn't see it as being closed myself either.
So if I might just give it an example, an example on the trade secret and and Mr. Pine may remember this from years ago, we worked together. On economic development thing, we had an industry company wanting to come to Trenton, they had a specific proprietary way of manufacturing. And it required them to ask us for something special. Right, and because of that arrangement where it wasn't really a negotiation around anything because they'd already bought the property, but they needed us to provide something that was unique. To them, and for them to explain it to us, they had to release how they did something like a manufacturing process that wasn't that was proprietary. That fell under that piece.
Absolutely.
Yeah, what is in is very clear, so those sorts of examples I entirely understand. It's it's when we get into the non-competitive negotiation that I'm, I I was interested. Like, for example, three nine, two, three, nine, two. Point to a position, plan, procedure, criteria, or instruction to be applied to any negotiations.
So where the what the ombudsman says is where there's information intended to be applied from to negotiations. That's an area where you could consider going if there's specific things around negotiations perhaps. And then negotiations might be ongoing or coming up in the future. So again, you know, it's one of those technical areas where like it really depends on what you're. What the matter is specifically is, you know, if it's a negotiation, a financial negotiation. I would expect, and I could be wrong, that you could legitimately go in camera to discuss that piece of it.
But but if if you already have like a road, a shared road agreement.
Okay.
I mean, you you would, you would normally assume that it would be like a fifty fifty, you're going to agree to fix the bridge and the cost is shared fifty fifty unless. You could prove that damage had been done to the bridge by one party or the other, then I would think that you could. That's when you kind of get into a deeper negotiation that it might be enclosed.
Yeah, I I would, I would think typically they're pretty standard. Agreement, shared agreements, so. And all of that would normally is in already in the public domain, but if there's some specific things around that, that might not be there at that point. Potentially you could, Gary, did you want to jump in?
Yeah, I I would say that that particularly the second bullet point there that you mentioned, that is around where. Counsel would be giving myself, or in this case, like Mr. O'Val, just direction if we're going to do something, right? And our position is X, and here's your latitude with respect to monetary negotiations, positioning. What's what's the, what's the, what's the drop dead position, that sort of, that's what the second bullet point contemplates. Is around the more concrete planning around, yes, we have to do a bridge or we're doing a bridge, that would be part of the public domain. However, unless there's a position you're going into negotiations that you want to go beyond the current agreement saying, well, Muskoka should pay for more of a because. Then that you may get into.
That's the piece you could go in and talk about.
Just that one.
Yeah.
Thank you, that's very helpful, that's what I was aiming for, yeah.
As as you can tell, there's so many different circumstances that come up, where you have to try and think about, you know. How do we deal with this, you know, open or or closed, so it's sometimes it's just gray. You know, at itself, but again, err on the side of open rather than closed is the sort of the principle. The next one, which is what we're doing today, if you can go to the next slide. Is about education and and training and it's it's really quite clear for whether you're a council or a local board or or a committee. You can go into closed for education purposes, and there are really two two tests to it. The meeting is being held specifically for the purpose of education or or training of the members. And at the meeting, you know, no member is, I'm just reading here, no member is discussing or otherwise, dealing with any matter. In a way that would materially advance the business of the decision making of the council, local board. Or committee, so you're not going to be doing business or trying to advance business, it's purely education. And training, that's quite legitimate to be going in camera. You chose today to be an open session because it's an information session. And and that's certainly fair as well. So it really is specific about education and training, don't don't deal with business. That you need to move forward with in in council stuff, it's just about. Training, it might be, you know, just could be, you know, understanding strategic planning or or whatever it is. But it's for education and training purposes, you're quite legitimate, can go in and and do that. Okay. The next slide is really just about some other things that you have to have in terms of of complying with. The open meeting requirements, of course procedural bylaw that you have to have and every municipality has to have one. It sets out where you meet, when you call meetings and those sorts of things and and it provides the rules around public notice, you just, you have to. Have a procedural bylaw in place with those things in terms of closing a meeting, so we can talk about that in the next slide. It's clear that that when you want to close a meeting, that you have to state in by resolution, which I know you do. In open session, that the meeting is going to be closed, and what the general nature of each matter to be considered enclosed. So you you using one of the the exceptions, you're explaining that this matter is for labor relations. You know, relative to collective bargaining or something like that. So the general nature of it, but you need to state that in in the open, yeah, in your resolution. The next slide talks a little bit about that resolution being a general description. And the the principle is provide as much information you can. Pardon me, without undermining the reasons for excluding the public, so you can give as much as you can. In terms of why you're going into closed, without speaking to the matter directly, I guess, just good principles to to follow. The next slide is about who can complain, and the legislation is pretty clear that anybody can. Doesn't have to be a resident of Ontario, doesn't have to be a resident of Canada. It's anyone. So. But we often get questions, well. You know, they're not, it's not, they're not a resident of our community, why are they complaining, but they they can. Sure.
Because they can.
Because they can. So the last little bit that I wanted to talk about. Today. I'll wait for our. There we go. It's just some some tips. And this comes from the research that I've done and some of it from suggestions from the ombudsman and and others around. Sort of tips for staying on course. Some suggestions. You can go ahead and scroll, so the idea is to commit to open local government and. Being as transparent and and accountable and accessible as you can. You know, know what the the municipal act calls for. Should I carry on and just keep going? The paramedics. So just, you know, remember some of the things that we've talked about today around what the statute says, particularly municipal act. What your your own procedural bylaws say about your open meeting requirements. Make sure you give good adequate public notice about your meetings, that's just a good practice to follow. Next slide. Only go into into closed when there's a real need to exclude the public, so. You know, it's just as a matter of course, use it only when you absolutely need to in terms of going into closed. Make sure you use the right exceptions under under two thirty nine, so you don't get tripped up by, you know, you know. Not using the the rights section to go into closed, and then pass that resolution in in public. That gives enough information about the issue before you go into into closed meetings and just some good tips to do. Next one.
Where I think we might have failed in in, you know, in your reason for being here was possibly using one of the wrong sections of the act.
Oh.
Which is.
Yeah, I think that's a good, that's a good point, and so it's one of the pieces was, it was. We used a correct piece of the act, but then when the conversation drifted, it drifted into a different area, but we weren't clear, didn't provide enough. Clarification on why we're going in, we just quoted the. The exemption exemption section without specifically what we were going in to discuss, that was part of the the decision that came over to us. And so we've, we've done a much better job now in getting a little more clarity as to the purpose behind going to a closed session.
Great, that's that's perfect. So our next couple of tips, make sure you record, you know, the meeting that you're in, including any decision that you might make. But by taking minutes, you need to do that, don't vote in a closed session unless it's on a procedural matter. Or to give directions to staff or officials, you can do that, but don't do the other kinds of voting. And to the greatest extent possible, the slide says, you know, try to report back to the public in open session about what's occurred in enclosed, again, sort of. To close the loop around why you've gone into close, you can't necessarily give. The details, but just that you were discussing labor relations or matters like that. Next slide. Yeah, there we are, so we've been doing questions or comments. This again was just sort of meant as as a bit of review on open and closed meeting provisions. There have been some great discussion, really good questions today. And happy to continue to take questions or or any comments, you know, maybe turn it back to to Gary or your honor.
Any additional questions or comments that anyone would like to make? You know, it's, you know, speaking from many years of experience, it's it's challenging. Because there are times when you 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 wish that you could talk about something, whether it's to get reach clarity or, you know, you you think that it maybe has an impact on an individual and. You know, it's, or you tend to, you know, when you're enclosed. Connect things that that you believe are connected and really they're not, you know, according to the act and it 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 can be, it can be challenging. And, you know, as evidence, everyone, so well, we all. Make a bit of a mistake.
I I think one of the. Things to do is to always to call upon your staff for advice on on these things, I mean, that's that's what your staff are are there for. You can make your own decisions once they give you that advice, but typically it's coming from experience and having been through similar sorts of of situations, so don't be afraid to. Turn to Gary or to his staff and say, you know, what should we do? And and maybe also don't be surprised if you have staff who pipe up and say, you know, you're. You're straying in an area where you shouldn't be straying, don't be mad about that, be thankful that your staff are paying attention and. And the best directions you can.
And just to add to that, the other side is, don't be afraid to ask us why we have you going in a closed like happened this morning with, is that because. We're making assumptions based on certain things and and it's all do with a comfort level from council as well, at the end of day, council has the, that's the council's decision. So I would do not be afraid to ask us why we're doing it. The only thing of a pilot that and Jim brought it up earlier, I think is important, is one of the biggest areas. I rarely see formal closed sessions for the wrong reasons, there may be a nuance where it's the inadvertent email text chain. It's the one that really can cause issues, I I used to have to chase the council with us all the time. Where I'd have to jump in and say, you are now having a council meeting, right? And so I just caution against that and remember texts and emails are all official records of the municipality and you cannot destroy them.
Yeah.
So just that's the one I, a lot of people, and that's just, that's not nothing, I don't think it's ever intentional, but something you just, you get into a conversation. And next thing you know, you're actually having a meeting, so I highlight that one as well.
Where you're in a closed session and you you stray from from the primary rationale for the meeting in the first place. Well, I'd really like to thank you, you know, for for just kind of giving us a bit of a refresher, obviously every once in a while, we all need to be reminded of. Of best practices and we really appreciate the the work you've done and the information you've given us.
Thank you, it's been really enjoyable and I hope that it's been helpful.
Well, we're always happy to see you, Jim.
Great to be here.
So I think with, there's no further business to, did did we do the confirmation by law?
We just have to receive Mr. Pine's presentation and then.
Motion to receive the presentation, Counselors Burton and Carter, all in favor? And then just adjourned.
Not confirming by law.
A motion to receive the or approve the confirming by law, Counselors Fury and Shell.
The bylaw forty two sixty four being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of the October ninth meeting of Halliburton County Council be approved.
All in favor, that's carried. And finally, a motion to adjourn, Council McKechnie, Counselor Dayu.
Sticky fingers. At the October ninth, twenty twenty four, meeting of Halliburton County Council will be adjourned at one twenty four P M.
All in favor.